All right, sorry about the delay there. We had some procedural issues here. Welcome. We're gonna get this meeting started. Okay, good morning.
Good morning, Counselor.
Good morning.
Just wanna say the City Clerk's Office made sure I had my Braille for the special meeting, and I really appreciated that. So, uh, thank you very much. And also, Simi Parks here, can you get rid of that piece of trash out of here?
So, Speaker, you know the rules. Respectfully, this is not general public comment.
Oh, I can't speak about Peter Cash, Simi Park right there that likes chom waschers?
Not during this item, no.
Stick to the item.
Okay, thank you.
Morning. You have one minute. Go ahead.
Thank you. David Gaishan, Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles. This substantial remodel will force renters to live in dangerous conditions and tie the hands of responsible owners prohibiting them from making needed major system repairs and removing hazardous materials. This ordinance is a result of a witch hunt by extremists that want to force mom-and-pop owners out of business. LHD's data clearly shows that the claimed wave of rent evictions is a complete hoax with less than 100 substantial remodels occurring over the past two years. It is shocking that the City Council rather lead to false conclusions of guilt based on unverified stories than to acknowledge plain facts as presented by city staff. We strongly urge a no vote on this outrageous moratorium that once again rips the rug out from under housing providers and shows the city to be unreliable and openly hostile to them. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I was watching the City Council on Wednesday, and I hope I get to speak during the regular meeting. And I saw, I saw cowardness here. I saw this council fail a good public servant.
So, Mr. Candido, this is-
Because none of you, except for Mr.-
Mr. Candido, if you do not stop, I'm go- this is your first and only formal warning. Mr. Hold his time. Mr. Candido-
You gotta stay on the item, sir.
Do not disrupt this meeting. This is not on topic. I am trying to give you instructions. Your time is paused. You know the rules just as well as everyone else. So, you are welcome, you are welcome to speak during general public comment during the regular meeting on this. But this is, as you heard, Mr. Candido. This is your last warning. Do not interrupt.
Thank you. Next speaker. Okay, there are no, no additional speakers? Is that right?
So, Mr. Candido, this is, you've already been warned. Mr. Chair, he is eligible for removal from the special meeting if you would like.
I will not call more names for item 19.
Hello, my name is Ignacio Corillo, and I've been living in the address in Boyle Heights for 17 years, and in that same block for over 40 years. And my landlord is not a mom-and-pop. He's a real estate company. He was bragging to me that he has over 10 houses. And, uh, I already got the 60-day notice, and I'm hoping you guys can vote yes. And also, the amendment for people like me that I'm already going to go to court. And, uh, I'd really need your guys' help. My daughter, 17-years-old, she was crying and told me, "Are we gonna have to move that?" 'cause they're only offering us one month's rent, which is not enough to get a, another home. So, I really need your guys' help. Thank you.
Uh, my family has lived in Echo Park in the same apartment on Mohawk Street since the 1980s. They are currently facing their third eviction round for substantial remodeling due to the lack of action from the city attorney. It's been four months since the full City Council voted anonymously to end rent evictions with an urgency. I urge you to vote yes on the promise-written ordinance for our city with an extended deadline, and I encourage you to add protections for those in need. This situation is impacting elderly people and children who lack resources to defend themselves if they are evicted. Please vote yes on Agenda Number 19. Thank you.
My name is Laura Madder. I'm an attorney at Inner City Law Center. Um, I'm urging you to vote yes on number 19. Tenants should not risk eviction on a basis that the Count, Council voted unanimously to eliminate back in October. These are not hypothetical situations. These are real cases happening in court right now. And this is a provision that investors use to flip properties, and it goes against the purpose of the Just Cause Ordinance, which was to prohibit arbitrary evictions. This provision essentially allows arbitrary evictions, and the Council already voted to eliminate it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chris Estrada, and I'm an organizer with LACLA. Run eviction is used for one purpose and one purpose only. It's used to flip rental units with long-term tenants and replace them with new tenants at a much higher rent. These renovations are never anything but cosmetic, designed to attract tenants who can pay much higher than the POC tenants who have lived there for their entire lives. It's so important that we pass this ordinance today and that we include both the amendments to extend the time period and to apply it to pending cases. You've seen tenants here today who have pending cases, who are facing homelessness if those amendments are included. Your vote today determines whether they keep their homes or end up on the streets. We're asking you to make the right choice. Thank you.
Don't do it, Bob!
You have one minute. Go ahead.
Yay! So, let's see here. A motion to fuck? Who are we fucking today? Let's see here. We're fucking landlords today. That's it, right? Is that what we're gonna do, Bob? Today's victim is the landlords. Tomorrow, the business owners. So, let's see here. Little, little tiny Estebel Gerardo wants to remove exemptions and all this shit. So, I mean, Bob, can I get an apartment and not ever pay rent? That's all I wanna do, Bob. I wanna smoke fentanyl all week and live for free in a $4,000 apartment without paying for it. Can you help me do that, Bob? I'll be your friend. So, finally, I wanna say, fuck the City Council!
All right, lay off the helium. Next speaker.
Hi, Philip Meyer, resident of Council District 13. I wanna thank the Council for passing the substantial remodel ordinance back in October, whatever that was. I was here talking to H&amp;H two weeks ago, whenever that was, where we had the Housing Department and the City Attorney sitting here and not able to give any kind of explanation for why there had been such a delay writing that ordinance. Now, dozens of people have had to spend many hours of their time trying to figure out what to do about the fact that the city agencies simply can't pull it together to write the ordinance. It's really unfortunate that you all, that all the staffers, all the people here, all the people waiting to talk about other issues have to sit here to deal with the delaying of a thing simply because our agencies can't do this work, and we don't really have an explanation for why that is. So, this is a no-brainer. Obviously, you all passed this already. We want it to happen. We should extend the interim control ordinance so that people don't get evicted and the will of the Council is carried through. But what is going on within these agencies? It's bad for public trust-
Speaker, your time has expired. Next speaker.
Good morning, Council members. My name is Stefano Medina. I'm an eviction defense attorney. I'm here to speak on item number 19. First of all, thank you to all of the Council offices that are moving this motion forward, Council Offices 3, 13, and 14. As an attorney, I just want this body to know how unique and unprecedented and rare and weird and atypical the interim control ordinance that the City Attorney put out on this item was. I've won in front of courts all across the county for years the argument that a new tenant protection applies to all eviction cases that have not been rendered into a final judgment. That is settled law, ladies and gentlemen. I win that argument several times a year. And yet, the City Attorney, despite this Council's wishes, created a carve-out, arguing and scaring this body into thinking that somehow this protection would, would be retroactive or that landlords needed some, some protection if they had already taken steps. That would be a gross departure from how tenant protections have been legislated in the past.
Speaker, your time has expired. Next speaker.
Perdón. Este, uh, en Boyle Heights-
I've lived 17 years in Boyle Heights. I'm here to talk about eviction.
Tenemos mucho acoso. Ya nos dieron el último. Somos más personas de la tercera edad.
We've been, we've been harassed-
Cada día se nos está siendo más difícil.
We've been harassed greatly-
Sobre todo las rentas que están muy altas. Yo dependo de mi seguro social. Solamente, soy sola.
Señora, señora, este, necesito que pausen tres sus frases para poder traducir. Podría comenzar un poquito más desde atrás?
Okay.
Gracias.
Ah, le digo que tengo 17 años viviendo en Boyle Heights.
I've lived in Boyle Heights for 17 years.
Ten, uh, soy sola. Yo dependo de mi seguro social.
I live alone and I depend on my social security.
La renta está muy alta. Tengo solamente-
And now the rent is too high.
Tenemos para tres, tres meses más.
We just have enough for three more months, and they want to evict us.
Casi todos somos de la tercera edad y tenemos-
Almost all of us are elderly?
Tenemos, este, solamente, como le digo, solamente dependemos del seguro social para salirnos de ahí.
We just depend on social security?
Es difícil porque las, las rentas están altísimas.
And it's so difficult because-
¿Dónde vamos a ir a la calle?
The rent is so high. Where are we supposed to go? The street?
Solamente, uh, nos alcanza la renta y lo demás como podemos sobrevivimos.
With what we have, we can only pay the rent, and with the little that is left, we just survive.
No sé qué va a pasar con nosotras.
I don't know what's gonna happen to us.
Si nos van a, vamos a ir a la calle. Los apartamentos del gobierno es difícil.
Are we gonna end up on the streets? It's hard to get into a government apartment?
No tenemos mucho de dónde escoger. ¿Qué vamos a hacer?
We don't have a lot to pick from in terms of what we're gonna do. I'm alone.
Disculpes, que es, me emociono.
I'm sorry. I get emotional.
Todavía tenemos una audiencia con, con el dueño y no nos da mucha esperanza.
We still have one more meeting with the owner, but we don't have much hope.
Gracias.
Hay tengo una demanda de, de desalojo por remodelación y quisiera que votaran, um, para que no los sacaran.
And we've already gotten an eviction notice due to substantial remodeling, and we're hoping that we won't get evicted.
Mi familia ha estado muy estresada por la situación que estamos pasando.
My family is very stressed due to the situation that we're living through.
Las rentas están muy altas y no podemos pagar mucho más de lo que estamos pagando ahorita.
The rents are so high, and we can't really pay much more than we're paying at the moment.
Ah, gracias.
Thank you.
Good morning. Uh, my name is Chelsea Kirk. I'm a policy director at Sage. Uh, please vote for the draft interim control ordinance to temporarily pause rent evictions until a permanent ordinance is adopted. There are tenants here today who will be evicted if this does not pass as amended. Please also, I urge you to vote for the amendment introduced by Council Members Blumenfield, Yorado, and Soto Martinez, so this can apply to existing cases. There's a group of tenants here today that have been fighting their cases for two years now. Their third eviction was filed in November, right after the Council unanimously adopted the motion to draft an ICO. And now, they are exposed to eviction yet again. It is their stories that inspired this motion to begin with, and so we absolutely cannot risk exposing them to eviction. Please, I urge you, all Council members here today, vote for this amendment. Thank you.
Um, my name is Phoebe. I'm an organizer with the Los Angeles Tenants Union, and in October, most of you were part of a unanimous vote to pass the ordinance banning substantial remodel evictions. That urgency clause was not taken seriously by the City Attorney, Heidi Feldstein Soto, whose office dragged their feet for months, allowing landlords to continue to abuse this loophole in the Just Cause Ordinance. One such landlord, Ariel Isaacson, who is none of your constituents, filed a third round of unlawful detainers against elderly tenants at Mohawk Street. Um, and I just wanna emphasize that if you don't pass, uh, the ordinance today with the amendments that have been introduced, uh, there are people in this room, people here today, people who took time out of their busy lives and work schedules to be here, who will get evicted, and those are your constituents that you need to protect with your yes vote on item number 19 today. Thank you.
And before the next speaker begins, I just wanna let everybody know, it looks like some of our guests for the presentation are already familiar with the next speaker. But I suspect that we might hear some things that are, um, offensive, to say the least. But please understand that, Mr. Herman, your public comment, period, has not started. So, do not disrupt the instructions and the notice that I'm trying to give the public. This is your first and only warning during the special meeting. So, you may hear things that are offensive. Uh, we appreciate everybody's patience. That does not mean that this body, this city, or any individual member agrees with those things, but the First Amendment requires that we allow them to speak during public comment, in this case, on item number 19. So, thank you for bearing with us. Speaker, you have one minute for the item, and to be clear, that is item number 19. Go ahead.
Thank you, motherfucker, for the prior impermissible restraints on my free speech. But we already know that when I was in Boyle Heights for 15 fucking years paying rent, and the fucking pigs up there, LAPD, arrested me that evening on the basis of false charges that I was making, uh, they call that, uh, um, threats. Well, that's not a threat, you fucking bitch. It's my First Amendment of free speech. And so, when the LA made me homeless, I had to do my drug sales on the streets. And it's very difficult 'cause it's very cold. But again, Jonathan Groh, uh, prior to your restraints on my First Amendment, fuck you. Fuck the DA and fuck the police.
So, not on the agenda. This is your only warning. You're welcome to say those things to me during general public comment if you'd like.
Fuck you, Groh. Fuck you.
Thank you very much, uh, Council President, colleagues. While Holocaust Remembrance Day passed on January 27th, which is the anniversary of the liberation of Auschwitz and Birkenau, as a time to remember the 6 million Jewish victims of the Holocaust and the millions of others Nazi persecution that passed, but I still wanted us to take a moment, uh, to officially recognize and remember. Uh, the way to do that today is to honor, honor Hillary Helsting. Hillary has spent decades helping to tell the stories of Jews, Gypsies, Gays, Poles, and others who suffered and who perished during the Holocaust. One of the ways that Hillary has done this is through the LA Jewish Film Festival. It's an annual festival, and it's, it's pretty amazing, and I urge everyone to check it out. Another, through a partnership with the Black Jewish Entertainment Alliance, the Council Generals of Poland, Germany, and many others. This includes panels in honor of the late Congressman John Lewis and the Honorable Ruth Bader Ginsburg. Documentaries about Colin Powell, Heather Booth, Sheila Katzen Gold of My Ear. And with support from the ADL, American, uh, Americans Jewish Committee, ICAN, the Holocaust Museum, Stand With Us, Creative Community for Peace, Hillary has, has been able to bring cutting-edge films to Los Angeles every year. And she celebrates the Jewish experience through film. This year, I wanna honor Hillary herself because the movie she made was one of, one of many that was featured at venues around the city. Hillary's movie is called "As Seen Through These Eyes." It was narrated by Maya Angelou, and it focuses on prisoners in concentration camps' survival through the creation of art and music. Uh, we have a, a little clip of this special film, which I'm gonna ask that we play right now. So, if we could roll the clip.
Deeply moved and humbled to be in front of so many community leaders and change-makers and among your esteemed guests. My career focus has always been my commitment to give community to community and education teaching empathy and compassion and giving a voice to survivors and the silenced. I am honored to be recognized in my work and my dedication to Holocaust remembrance and to keeping the memory alive of those we have lost. I stand here today as a filmmaker who embarked on a 10-year journey to document and share an important story about a brave group of people who used art as their weapon for memory, survival, and learning. Stories that are always current as these lessons of humanity are never out of date. My purpose with this film was to capillary Booker and Dr. Clarence B. Jones, extolling the related-
Anyone wish to speak to that? Seeing no speakers on the queue, let's, uh, vote on the urgent fourth whip. Call the roll, please. Or open the, uh, open the roll. Tell your votes. Close the roll.
Twelve eyes.
Okay.
This item will be sent urgent forthwith.
Urgent forthwith.
And I just wanna give my personal gratitude to the entire body for passing this today, and most importantly, for the Mohawk tenants, uh, in District 13. This is a, this is a, a great example of how the grassroots, uh, leads to the chamber and how the chamber leads to the grassroots. I had the privilege of, of visiting you personally, uh, in one of your meetings and understanding that issue on a much more personal level. And I'm just really grateful that, uh, Council Member, uh, Blumenfield and Yaroslavski initiated this, uh, fixing up the loophole. And, uh, I just wanna say, you know, seeing your evolution and your fighting spirit inspires me, inspires many of us here. And like I said to you personally, uh, many times ago, that it is organizing and growing your own leadership is the most important thing. And this body, uh, many times, just leads, uh, from your example. And so, I wanna thank you for your courage and for being here today. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I see the piece of trash, Simi Parks, in the corner there doing her slithering. When she was the, from the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment as a director before she got ransacked and Bo, and Mr. Blumenfield had to take this piece of trash, and God forbid you, sir, that you have to take this piece of trash. Uh, she believed all formerly incarcerated people should be Neighborhood Council Board members, including sex offenders, convicted sex offenders. And she enjoys it and so forth. Then, of course, she says, "I'm gonna, I wanna work violence restraining order against this person. He's a white Trump supporter. I'm still waiting for it, you little shit." And that's what you are. You're just a fucking nothing. And then, you have to, of course, hurt Bob Blumenfield, where most of his staff always stays with him. And then, you had to be pawned off after you got demoted and removed as a director. Now, you're saying you're a senior legislative? The person you work for, Jeff, is an actual attorney. Grow up, you fucking shit.
Okay, thank you.
Next speaker.
Next speaker.
Morning.
Good morning. Richard Serrano. All items and general public comment, please.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general. Please begin with the items. Go ahead.
Um, we're looking at adding money for communications for the fire department. You still got 16 mechanic positions that you have in field. You just had a fire. How about putting that money to use to get those vehicles backing up and running? You guys are reactive, not proactive. I don't get what you guys are doing. Ms. Park, gotta commend you. The one person that could have been a stickler or said something and hurt her the most in her district, she defended the chief.
So, Speaker, you're welcome to speak to this during general public comment, but I'm asking that you stick to the items for the first three minutes, please. Thank you.
Okay. I guess 14, or is that not available?
14 is unavailable, so if you wanna hold this time for just a second. The items, just for everybody, 'cause I know there's been a lot of different things said at this meeting. The items that are open for public comment on the agenda in the regular meeting are items 1 through 9 and item 17. So, again, items 1 through 9 and item 17. Go ahead and begin.
The weed tax. You guys make 1, 130, $130 million for taxes. Now, that's what you wanna do? No wonder you're opening up so much cannabis areas. Monica Rodriguez and Park were the only people that stood up for the city. Now, you guys looked the last time. Let's go to general public comment.
So, you have one minute. Go ahead.
The last time I seen, the evidence didn't matter. Mayor was disproving all three items and still did not reappoint Crawley. That is incredibly that you guys are despicable like that. The last time that happened, five officers were acquitted, or four were acquitted. And it didn't matter whether they beat that black man, Rodney King. 1992 riots. Is this what we have to get to? That you guys really don't care no matter what evidence is presented? Every one of you should have voted for her to get reinstated because of the evidence that she presented to you. And Marquise Dawson, she's got the right to. Yeah, she's got the right to. She's got the right to do anything she wants. So does Donald Trump, right? But here we are, a new world. Doesn't matter what's right. It's whatever you want. It's not us. Harris, sorry, man. Harris Dawson should have been the one taking the blame for this.
Next speaker. Good afternoon. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
Thank you, Johnny Sins. Thank you, Johnny Sins. Uh, start with item number one. [Singing] When a train comes into this unfamiliar city, I saw a rainbow that I hadn't seen before. I opened my envelope and it was written by someone. I felt a deep longing for you. I couldn't see the winter, the city of night. I heard someone cheering, someone crying. I'm used to穿梭 through the dark night. I can't forget your face. Thank you, Johnny Sins. Let's move on to item number two. Has anyone ever told you that you love me? Has anyone ever cried in your diary? Has anyone ever told you that you care? About the distance between you? I came to your city. I walked along your path. I imagined a day without me. What kind of loneliness was it? I looked at the photos you gave me. The same street I used to walk. Thank you, Johnny Sins. Let's move on to item number three. We just haven't seen your picture. We can't go back to that day. Will you suddenly appear in a bar? I'll smile and say hello. I'll sit and chat with you. I'd love to meet you. I'll see how you've changed. I won't say goodbye. I'll just say hello.
General public comment.
I'll just say hello. Thank you very much, uh, Johnny Sins. Thank you, Johnny Sins. Um, for the general public comment, I want to make sure that, uh, all the smoking scan viewers on the worldwide, let's pay attention to the 2026 Council District 1 election. Uh, Spindler does not have millions of dollars. Uh, nobody donated, all those woke Democrats will not donate to Spindler, uh, millions of dollars to run for Council District 1. But we do have the support from the smoking scan. Uh, 2020, 2022, Hernandez only win with only 16,000 votes. So, if every single smoking scan viewer, let's make sure, spread the words out. Let's support our candidate, uh, Spindler in the Council District 1. We can make that. We have no money, but we can get there. And then, hopefully, and then if I have to create a OnlyFans page and a Pornhub page to support Spindler, I will. Three-inch shrimp, OnlyFans.
Next speaker. Good afternoon. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
Just for the record, clarity, uh, Simi Park is on record with you, Bob. You hear that, Bob? Simi Park is on record with you.
This is not on the agenda. This is your only warning. Stick to the agenda. I'm gonna move you to general public comment.
I'm on lean. Got it. Lean.
Hold on. Actually, pause this time. Mr. Spindler, do not disrupt. I know you wanna hear what Mr. Herman has to say. Do not disrupt Mr. Herman's public comment. And Mr. Herman, do not disrupt me while I'm giving instructions to other members of the audience. So, this is your first warning for both of you. Do not disrupt this meeting. We held your time. Continue.
God bless Donald Trump for all these lanes. It's time for the confirmation of every mother unconstitutional lien and abatement cause to be removed off every record from every man and woman here today. Because in CD4 in [mimicking drumming] Ramon Nito has three particular cases involving lanes, and they shall be dismissed after I speak with Donald Trump. And you will remove every- speak with Donald Trump. And you will remove every unconstitutional infringement on constitutional belief that every fucking American has a right to live in a house, a home, shelter, tent, wherever the fuck they wish and desire. Yeah, Donald Trump sucks a lot of liens. And look at this item here on number four. Mr. Jonathan Groth, will you back to me? The protest appeals for fucking objection from the fucking confirmation of every fucking lien for every fucking nuisance, for every fucking cost, and for every fucking inspections. Because I, an American citizen, waive constitutional belief that you are acting as a communist when you take people from their homes unconstitutionally. They should have every infringement, every right to come here and battle this ugly fucking city of Los Angeles for every fucking lien. Because I'm an American. Orale! So then you go to the other lien, lien after lien, unconstitutional. What item am I on, Groth? Item number five, you jackass. Again, consideration of hearing, protests and appeals, fucking objections from the Los Angeles Municipal Code in violation of constitutional belief that it's unconstitutional to make people homeless. That's what the courts put in the paper this morning, that you violate homelessness constitutional rights when you deprive the American people the goddamn right to waive a lien and forgive. Learn to forgive, motherfucker. God loves you, Groth. And I eat dog too. Woof, woof, woof. Now onto my general public comment. I believe that what smoking scan believes is that every motherfucking American should come here and protest to vote for Wayne Spindler to be our next mayor or a representative in CD one. And why? Smoking scan has a hundred and sixty-five thousand viewers who believe in Mr. Spindler. Mr. Spindler is a man of dedication. Mr. Spindler is a man of oath and faith. Mr. Spindler believes in the American dreams. If you got immigration problems, come to me. Come to me. I'll fuck you for your money too. Because this is the dream we have. And that dream is to believe that no fucking immigrant has a right as a non-citizen in my fucking country. If you want to believe, come to America, but come on the purpose of what you believe. I'm an American.
Next speaker.
This motherfucker.
You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general.
General public comment and all the motherfucking Adams. Big shout out to Seamy Park, Bob. I know why you took the ride.
Only warning, not on the agenda. Stick to the agenda items, or I'm gonna move you to general public comment.
So let's get on to number one. Noodle, noodle, noodle. That nasty Indian bitch on number one taxing four thousand fucking dollars of hard-earned money on a goddamn lien. Well, how many rupees is that? That is just out fucking outrageous that this little goddamn bitch from fucking New Delhi comes off a plane to tax our old people over four thousand fucking dollars, a goddamn lien that the city fucking fixed. Not knowing number one. And number two, another CD four. Noodle, 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 noodle. Yes, that's right. Another nuisance abatement by that goddamn socialist communist sitting there. I think she wears a wig. What do you think, Marquis? I think that has a wig. And I say, no, number two.
Not on the agenda. You were warned already. You are here at almost every meeting. You know the rules. You are on general public comment. One minute for general.
I'm on the topic. Stop interrupting me.
Okay, sir, you don't need to yell. You have a translator. Your time is running. Go ahead.
Give me my time back. Give me my time back.
Your general public comment is running right now. You were warned. So it's up to you. Would you like to continue with your general public comment or not?
Cheater. Give me my time back and stop cheating.
Now it's overly repetitive. So this is your last opportunity. You have thirty-four seconds.
You send your fucking staffer over to try to intimidate me, and now you cheat me out of my time, Bob. Why do you do that? Okay?
You're all listening very intently to your wonderful words. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, so you know what? You don't like me? Then I'm gonna tell the story of why you have Seamy Park on your staff with a full salary. Okay? You want to play? Let's play, motherfucker. I'm gonna release the documents, and we'll find out why she's pouring you coffee at a hundred thousand dollars a year, bitch.
Very enlightening. Let's, what do we have before us now? That is before us? Nope. I'm sorry. Mr. Herman, you have been warned. I could actually not hear what the clerk was saying, and he is sitting right next to me. You, Mr. Chair, he is eligible for removal if you would like. Goodbye, Mr. Herman. Please remove Mr. Herman. Rule seven, rule twelve. Throw the book at him. Please leave. Okay. Officers, please escort this. I don't want to say gentlemen. Goodbye. Lovely. You're wasting all of our time. Let the record reflect that this person is still yelling and disrupting the meeting. You're wasting all of our time. Please leave and please don't ever come back. Please. Let the door hit you on the way out. Now get out. Hit you on the way out. Go. Goodbye. All right. And I want to apologize to our, we have veterans in the audience here who fought for our freedoms to be able to say what we can and do what we, you know, as Americans, the freedoms that we have. And it's sad to see those freedoms abused the way that they are sometimes in this, in this chamber. But we thank you for your service and sorry that one of those freedoms gets exercised in a way that is totally repulsive. But next item.